Gartner City Council, come to order if you would please stand for the flag of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this world, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. We have three presentations on the agenda this evening. If you would so indulge me, we will do presentations one and two, and then we'll have a short break for coffee and cookies, if you still want the cookies after we do number two. And then, sure, after that break, we'll begin again with presentations from the E D C. Tonight, we have a belated presentation of recognition of service for an extraordinary individual, someone who has contributed so much to this community that many will not know how much he's contributed. Patrick, Patty Harley, girls, if you could come up. Officers, you are welcome to join us here as well, or you can stay. It's up to you. Everyone is aware the Gardner lost a great, great man a month ago, as a matter of fact, a month ago, yesterday. And this community and the departments, both police and fire from communities surrounding us and beyond, honored him tremendously on September 21st for his years of service. And this year was Ken Francis's 25th year with the City of Gardner. He started in July of 1987. He was hired by then-mayor Phyllis Toman, and served through the remainder of her term, and then with Carol. And Carol and Ken were a team for 20 years. It was an amazing, amazing thing. Ken Francis built a department where there was none before. And he built a department that few believed would work. We had, you know, volunteer fire department at the time, and he brought this idea of public safety, and that was, as I understand, near heresy when that idea exploded. And it's no way you'll never get, you'll never get police officers to fight fires, you'll never get firefighters to hand out tickets. But by golly, he did it. He did it. He did it incredibly well. He did it so well, in fact, that very, very few citizens knew that we had a department of public safety. They had a police department and a fire department, just like every other city that they've come to grow. So Ken Francis was a great influence on me. I started on, excuse me, started on a council in 1995, and I asked him for some advice. And he said, he pointed to Carol, and he said, "Listen to her. She cares about this town." And he pointed to Bob Page, and he said, "He might be a little cranky, but he's got a great heart, and he's forgotten more about this town than most people know." And Ken was a source of advice all through my years. I very much appreciated his friendship and his good counsel. He is someone who just made you feel very calm, regardless of what was going on around. So we always have a certificate from the League of Kansas Municipalities. I know that you already received Ken's, a pin from the league, of course, and then our recognition of his service to the community. He was an extraordinary man. I will miss him much, miss him already. So, anyway, thank you very much. Anything you want to say?
I do.
Okay.
Just briefly, I just wanted to say that Ken Francis loved this community, and I don't know very many of the new council people, but he respected everything that we always did. And he always didn't agree or disagree, as we know, he's opinionated. But he would always say, "It's my job to make it work." And he did the very best he could, you know, "The lemonade out of lemons," is what he used to say. "We'll get it done." That was his philosophy. And he always wanted everybody in the community to feel free to come and talk to him. I've had people at the police station, we've had people at the downtown room, and I've even had people at my house that wanted to come and talk to Kenny. So I'd like to say, he loved this city, he loved this town, he loved the community, and he loved all the people here. Thanks me very much. And I'm sure he would be very proud, as he was honored, to be your chief of police.
We were honored to have you. He did community policing before anybody knew what community policing was. So that was a great thing. He was well-known, and everyone knew, and everyone could approach him. And that was, and that's what, that's what officers should have. That's the kind of relationship they should have with the folks they serve. And he served as well.
He was very proud of this department, very proud of this department.
Yes, yes, he was.
You know, and he did, he believed in the community policing, where you drive by and wave at a person, you know, "Don't make people afraid of you. Make them want to talk to you. Make them feel comfortable." And I can say, I have, I've had people come to my house, "Chief, can we talk to you?" And say, "Yes."
Yeah. And they talked to him whether they were on the-
No matter where.
-right side or the wrong side. It really didn't matter.
Well, we've had both at our house. We've had both. No, he, he said he was proud and he was honored to be here all these years. But he also said he had a wonderful team of people.
He did.
You can't just do it by yourself. One person can't do it all. You have to have a great group of people helping.
He did. Any other wonderful group, and we have a wonderful group here, and Gardner will continue. So he built a great department. You guys made him very proud, and we very much appreciate it. Yeah?
Patty and Patrick, I just want to let you know that on behalf of the men and women of the Gardner Police Department, thank you for sharing him for 25 years with us. We all know it's not easy to be married to somebody in the public service field, especially when they're calling you at home, they're stopping by, you go out for dinner, and somebody stops by your table. It's like you have no privacy. But it was that type of commitment that made this department what it is today. Thank you for sharing him for the 25 years he was here.
You're welcome.
Great. Okay, we're gonna have one quick proclamation, then we're gonna have coffee and cookies and milk business, all right? Oh, no, no, we're just, yeah, we're just gonna, right after we'll take the announcement. Have a quick proclamation that I have been asked to submit regarding Food Day on October 24th. Because whereas Food Day, October 24th, 2012, challenges members of our community to eat real, whether it is one ingredient, one meal all day, or every day, and whereas Food Day educates and inspires the greater Kansas City community to create a stronger, healthier, more accessible, more sustainable local food system, and whereas reducing obesity and diet-related diseases by promoting safe and healthy diets is a critical factor in improving citizens' overall health, and whereas supporting sustainable family farms and local agriculture benefits the local economy, and whereas obtaining fair pay and safe conditions for food and farm workers is beneficial for both the producer and consumer so that the food we produce and consume is safe and fair for all, and whereas expanding access to real food to those who live in food deserts is critical to alleviating hunger, now therefore be it resolved that I, David T. Gavetta, Mayor of the City of Gardner, Kansas, do hereby proclaim October 24th, 2012 as Food Day in the City of Gardner. So we do have, in the back, some pamphlets on food counter and a nutrition guide for fast food. Not that anyone here goes to fast food, but just in case you should happen to know someone, you could take one along for them. And then, of course, there's some, "Real Food," as it's called, some pears in the back that were grown by one of the citizens, one of the residents of Gardner Lake, Harold Queens. He brought them in for anybody, so they are fresh pears grown in Gardner, Kansas. And then, for those of you that eat healthy every day, all the time, there's a little treat over here on the table. We'll take about a 10-minute break, and then we'll get back to it.
That's not where it went, but that's a good time. I, so what do I, for example, do I do? Because so many of these people, I think we wanted to do other stuff. In fact, in politics, it's that, you know, without a chance, you don't have a huge million, so you're out. So the nine folks that happened, they doubled down on their, their antagonizing approach. They doubled down on, and more so, so.
I mean, that's, that's beautiful.
And not only that, but no one can tell you who they reported to. Because when, what happened is, very village, said, "Well, we want to play, she called me," and I said, "We'll be lost back."
So, so that probably because of the, like, the, the-
Yes. And so they went to, so that was part of it. So, but they moved them out, like, and they doubled down on, so, she said, "Well, I don't care why not win this whole thing like you did." Yeah. So then she got around with the rest, and we were like, "What really got to do with me?"
So, what is, so what is it, you have to be 50?
I don't think we had them out. So, but see, now they doubled down, they said, "No, we're not, we're not, we're not." So-
So, everybody else required them.
And they should be doing it every year. So everybody else, they did have it, but like, the big boys, they did have it. Now they care because they think it's dangerous living with a house. So what happened is almost 13 were cared, and now the big boys are afraid. They went to, as they, as they were, with the pressure, and that's why I thought, um, I'm on the water here, I'm, um, personally, and then, um-
(inaudible)
So, anyway, now we've been, we've done a project.
Okay.
On both sides. So, she got in, I mean, I don't know, maybe she's, 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 maybe
To do it, I can do the research, I can have the research done to help that out. And, uh, marketing. The marketing that we do is in a couple of ways. We do some ad placements. The New Century Air Center does ad placements in the Kansas Business Journal. They do them in other publications. And in their ads, they have our organization really co-advertised. And so what that does is if someone responds to that ad, is looking for any example would be, if they're looking for a building, I wouldn't just search the buildings out of New Century unless they said that's where they wanted to be. But the airport has, has allowed us to use them as a prospect and again, we can represent the whole southwest area. We also work with real estate and development businesses in the metropolitan area. There are a number of organizations, you know, we all are in businesses that have acronyms. And, you know, we can go to MAIOP or CMT or silr. And those are all real estate related development business organizations. And the reason that we, that I participate in a lot of those is that those people are, what they say, doing the deals. Those are the people that are involved in real estate and development in all facets of this, whether it be retail, residential development, industrial development, manufacturing. There, those meetings are where we can, I can get exposure, I can meet them and assist in them meeting other people. We, you know, we don't do, certainly don't do this alone. And, uh, other development organizations or development allies, the Gardner Area Chamber of Commerce, the Kansas Department of Commerce, the Kansas City Area Development and Kansas City Smart Court. We have what we call Johnson County Partnership, which is all of the economic developers in the county getting together and talking about how we can, how we can market or how we can portray Johnson County in the most positive light to the development community and to prospects. We have the Gardner Energy and other utilities, the real estate developer and brokerage. These are basic. Two thousand twelve, we're beginning to see more activity in Gardner specifically. We've had people come in and look at potential sites for hotels, for restaurants, for businesses, manufacturing, distribution, et cetera. Right now, what we don't have is we don't have the market turned up enough. And in some cases, we don't have the population base to have those retail and service companies that have a model. And so we're not quite there yet for some of them. But we are seeing an increase. We're seeing some increase in the industrial and distribution. Midwest Commerce Centers had several looks this year. They had several people that are still looking at that location. One thing that we've seen a real growth in is the number of inquiries about land. Whether it be small parcels or, or large parcel, people are contacting us about everything from asking how much land is worth to, you know, how do we go through the process to who do we talk to as a community? And what I can do is really serve as kind of an intermediary. Introduce them to the Gardner Power, introduce them to Cheryl, introduce them to someone that they want to talk to specifically about development. Um, I think we'll see more and more of that, not only in the residential area, but the industrial area and in the service sector. Services, there has been, there has been some activity, the L.A. Medical Center, Casey's and, and the QuickTrip. Uh, they keep saying they are coming, so we're looking forward to that. The, I put down the joint sewer project because I think that's a very, very positive thing in that it gives Gardner the ability to get capacity that, that you're going to need when, when the development starts happening. Two thousand thirteen, I wish I had a crystal ball. Two years ago, um, you know, when, when people were starting to say, well, we're out of the dip and we're on our way up, I was thinking that we would be a lot busier, have a lot more permanence issues, whether it be residential, or commercial. And came to the conclusion that maybe in my next life, I'll either be an economist or a weatherman because I was wrong. So, we're looking for twenty thirteen really to pick up. We're also looking for the continued partnership and, and to really expand that in the community with the elected officials and other people who are interested. And what we really need is for you to tell us what you need specifically. We have a program of work and, and because of the limited time, I didn't want to go into a bunch of details. Uh, you know, I mentioned we do some direct advertising, we do a lot of personal relationships. We do, uh, marketing with KC, ABC and Smart Court, with the state, the Department of Commerce. But as a, as elected officials in the city, we need to know what you want us to work. We're, we're having our planning meeting for our organization in about a month. And so if you have suggestions, if you have, again, items, things that you want us to, to look at, let us know. We'd be happy to, to help you out. I'd like to open up for questions and hopefully, if you do have something, we can start that conversation.
You, you, you mentioned you've got a planning meeting in about a month. Is that, is that a closed door session or is that something that's open too?
It's our board, but I mean, there's nothing top secret about it. It's we're going to talk about Southwest Johnson County, the opportunities, you know, the SWAT. But we're also going to talk about what we need to do to encourage and assist in development.
So if he wanted to audit that, would he be able to show them and take notes?
As long as your words have done what's important.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Would it be possible, as a follow-up to that, though I may show up to audit just in case, which I allow, um, to call that maybe with just a brief summary of the meeting itself and some of the things that you did discuss that the board might be able to look at so we can say, you know, here's what the agenda entails and here's some of the top points that came across and some of the things we will carry on as our focus.
Definitely. We'll have a summary of that available to you. The, the other thing I want to say is that if something comes up and if you want me to appear before the council, just give a holler, I'll be here. I mean, uh, if you have questions, there's my contact information. We have the answering questions on an individual basis too.
How often does the board meet?
Our board, our board meets as a whole about four times a year. We have an executive committee that meets in alternate months and then we have a, a function of, in the other months.
I'd really like, and hopefully it's not set too far, but one of those meetings comes, if there is some things, just a summary of the meeting itself and just, just one thing, say here's some of the things that we discussed, if there's some, some things that might be coming through, if it's a summary of some sort that we can receive and kind of review, I think that'd be really beneficial if we looked at things for, especially with thirteen that pops up, like we're open and will, should be a lot to talk about.
Yep.
You know.
I, one of the things and, and, um, I know me, I personally am quite frustrated with talks about this is how, I feel like there, there's things that happen and, and we don't hear about them until afterwards. So, uh, somebody is inquiring about something and then that there's something that isn't in place or they, they don't feel they're going to get council support. I mean, honestly, I have to be frank, everybody thinks that, you know, we're not easy to work with for whatever reason. So, how, I'm interested in your thoughts on how we move, I guess, more upfront in the process? I mean, I, I don't like, you know, hearing about things when it's too late for us to discuss and do something about it. I mean, a perfect example, and I can't remember the exact name of the business, was Track Works or, or something that was looking out off move by. And, you know, we hear about that stuff afterwards and, and we never really, I never feel like we really get a good, um, I guess root cause analysis of why. And, and for me, that's frustrating. So, I don't know how we change that.
Number one, I get frustrated most of the time too when I hear something and it's going and I have to track it down. But, um, uh, some of these, Track Works is an example, they were located out of New Century, uh, we're looking for a facility, um, and we're looking at that location as a, an opportunity. They found the building or put that, to financially put them in a better position internally. But I worked for them. In that case, I don't think it would have done any good. If it, if I think it, it needs to be to the council, to the mayor, to Cheryl, I'll get it there. But as far as, as far as people and their opinions of, of Gardner as being a place where it's easy to do business or, or friendly to business, uh, that's one of the things that I do when I'm out also is talk about the communities, what's happening, uh, the, the, uh, changes that have occurred over the years. And, and, you know, if, if there, if there is a way that the council could help with that, I'd be, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, and, and that's what I'm at, I mean, I just don't know, but I feel like that there's, I mean, we have a new council up here. We, as a group, haven't had a brand new business coming in here that, that has kind of went through the process. And I feel like some of that stuff is being swelched based on, you know, previous perceptions and, and we haven't even, so, so there's no opportunity for us to change that. And not that we would agree to everything, but at least have some discussion about it. And I feel like we're, we're kind of behind the eight ball when it comes to that.
I, I think that'd be the opportunity is number one, but I will say that, um, with the, uh, uh, there was a point in time when there was an intercity manager that was, and I think now that we have that position solidified, uh, I will say that, uh, there is a project out there that, that we're working on and they've been very complimentary of the people, the staff, uh, the electric utility. So, I'd tell other people like that.
I guess one of the things we could do is a, a reaffirmation of our, our basic policy. You know, have those policies set in place so that, um, when there is a prospect, it's something that's going to be handed rather than, you know, well, let me go find out, you know, what's the, what's the sense of the council. I think if we got together and said, this is, you know, we did that with debate policy, for example, with respect to other, um, you know, other issues, other questions, timeline and so on, uh, one of the challenges is, uh, you know, it's like that, that friend that comes to you and says, man, I really got this problem, I gotta talk to you about it, but I don't want you to say anything. So, there's not much you can do about the issue until they're ready to take the chance of it being public because, um, we are a public entity, an open entity and, and when a majority of us become aware, it's a public thing. So, you know, it's both really don't, you know, there's all sorts of issues. So, it is challenging, but I think if we were proactive and said, you know, this is what we have, um, you know, these are our fees and, and these are the ones, these are the fees we're willing to, um, to discuss, you know. Ex-uh, that's, you know, that's not on the table. Yeah, those.
I think that brings up a really good point, Tom, and you probably would have some pretty valuable feedback because you work with so many different municipalities and businesses. If there is, whether it's written or unwritten policy that Gardner has that, that puts us at disadvantage immediately, where if it's something that hasn't been updated recently enough, so people think, well, they may have to look at the senior policy, they can act upon. If we're ahead of that, then it's, if, if they understand that that's one roadblock that won't be up. Or if it's an unwritten policy that other communities have in regards to development, that we need to actually look and see if that's something that should be valid for, for our folks and will put us at a competitive advantage as well. I don't know if you've had a chance to analyze that or you've had a chance to gauge the feedback and find where we might have shortcoming to that.
That's the business environment I'm talking about. And, uh, I do work with city staff and, and we have discussed, uh, whether it be policies or procedures, and we'll continue to do that. But I had a developer tell me one time that what they want is certainty. You know, they, if you lay your process out for them and you tell them you have to do one, two, three and four, then they make a business decision based on that, whether they can or can't do it. But if you go through and, uh, they don't know the, the bait policy, for example, Gardner has a written policy, you can say, this is the policy. And there is a caveat in that policy and every policy in the, that I know of in the area that says that this policy needs to be affirmed by the council. But, so it's not a do or end all, but the, you know, you abide by it unless there's something that comes up.
Well, I think kind of key to that is, is us positioning and determining, I mean, because I, I, I for one would not say that I'm willing to abate any sort of business at the time. And, and I think that's part of, of what we need to discuss is what are, what are those types of businesses? What is the pay? What, you know, all of that, um, before we kind of create. Exactly. And, um, that we can feel comfortable that, that we've done due diligence and, and communicated what we're looking for. I mean, I, I, what I don't want us to do is be in a position where hopefully in January twenty thirteen, you know, development starts going wild, but that we're just, feel like we're desperate for anything, that, that we don't do due diligence and plan what, what we really want.
We, we just did a new policy for New Century Air Center, baited policy. And the way we went about that was, I did the research as far as what baiting policy works in the area, brought that to a group committee, small committee, and they discussed what is the, what were the goals of the air center, what they can or can't do or will or won't do. And we came to a policy that went with that through. And I think that's a good way to do it. You have the, the research, the discussion, then the action.
Tom, I'll let you answer, I've got a couple of questions for you. I think I hinges on what, and Chris were talking about. I, I looked at your contracts and I just wondered what the deliverables are in a sense of that reporting mechanism. Do we have a, a monthly or quarterly report saying, hey, this is what the EDC is working on, goes back to what Christie was saying as well? And we would be able to red flag it or reach out to you or a cup of coffee or, or what have you? But I really would like to see a concerted effort of that type of deliverable versus us having to ask you, okay, what happened last month or what have you? I mean, it's just something that we get. And that would give us the proactive position, sorry to interrupt you, the proactive position to, to, to begin that due diligence and not be, you know, in that corner of looking, you know, desperate.
I do report monthly and, um, list, uh, prospects, activities, unacted prospects, usually not a lot of detail because I can't. But if someone had a question on that, I'd certainly respond and tell them what I could. I also put in that report, even, uh, activities, whether it be marketing, whether it be meetings, functions, things like that that we do to try to.
But is, is the council as a whole already receiving that with the report? I haven't personally seen that. Did we just get on an email, just after we were? The second question I had for you, and maybe I'm just, um, looking at it wrong, but is this contract that we have with you guys signed? I mean, do we have a signed contract between EDC and the city of Gardner?
The last, you know, um, I came to the council and we had amended a contract that we had in the past.
Okay.
It passed, but to tell you the truth, I don't know if, if, we didn't have a copy, I didn't sign it.
So we're just working on good faith?
Well, in the, in the, if not that contract, the previous contract, it says that this will, you know, can be, uh, terminated at a certain point.
So, I mean, to read the verbiage of the contract and, you know, we're supposed to catch your check basically twice a year in January and July for some twelve thousand five hundred dollars, but I just wonder if, if we're paying that fee with an unsigned contract or how does that, how's that handled?
We do not have an F two contract. For the past, we're looking for one, check with the previous administrator and then we'll.
So I guess I'm looking at my last question, and it's really for Cheryl. Is this something that, and I, I know the time in the EDC have, you know, Gardner and Southwest Johnson County, you know, um, you know, we're at the front of their minds, you know, for that development, but is this something that we could self-perform and reutilize or repurpose, you know, that same twenty-five thousand?
Something, something that you might have that would even look at, you know, I've seen a new record that's going to be to this population, um, looking something we could evaluate and look at in the buyer reports, council pressure.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how the rest of the council feels. Um, and I didn't email my question in advance, I apologize. But, and, and I'm just looking at it really from a, a good steward of, of the city's dollars and I don't have a crystal ball either. And I know you've, you've been a part of, you know, bringing growth to our community, both, you know, long-term and short-term, that matter. But I'm just wondering, trying to think out of the box, you know, how can we utilize, you know, the, the contribution that we're making to the EDC, to, to, to the betterment of our community? And, uh, it's really just more of a question, we might find that the EDC is a great partnership and we want to continue it and therefore we probably want to sign the contract. But if we think otherwise, we need to, you know, discuss that and to down the path.
In the past, each year, we've, we've gone through during budget session, I've made presentations, the councils accepted it and if, if there wasn't a contract, you know, definitely an oversight on my part. But, uh, the agreement was there that we do economic services. Uh, certainly your, you know, it's your pride to.
Yeah, it's just a question really. I mean, I just, I just want to make sure that we're, you know, really considering all angles of, of what the city needs, you know, well, well beyond, you know, the council that's sitting here, you know, into the years to come. So, I just wonder how we could utilize those dollars internally, uh, you know, for the same better.
Good question.
Tom, oh, sorry. Uh, Tom, you had mentioned that you have ninety-three private members. And as I recall from the previous looks on your website, they were, I think they were called investors or something to that effect. You had different levels of investment. What, what were those levels again? And how much does each person, I mean, generally, you know, I don't know, it's?
Yeah, we have four, four levels. Uh, the lowest level's four hundred annual. Or is it six hundred? I'm sorry.
The lowest level, what is the lowest level called? Does it need to like bronze?
Bronze and, yeah. Bronze, silver, gold. Second level's six hundred. Third is twelve fifty. And the top is twenty-five hundred annual.
And how many members are investors, give twenty-five hundred?
Probably a half a dozen, I can get you a list.
Yeah, I would like to see a list of those. But is there anybody that's not paying that's not, I mean, can you be a member and not pay one of these levels of membership?
Uh, no.
We did honorary membership.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry. And we've got some people that were, uh, founders involved when the organization began, we gave them a lifelong member.
And they're retired.
So, so when the, uh, in the investors invest, do they, do they sign an agreement like this one that you have in the city? What do they get? And I guess, do they sign anything? An application form or?
They have an application form.
So what, I guess what kind of return on their investment are they looking for?
Well, it depends on who it is. We have contractors that are interested in information about what's going on in the general area they have. We have, um, uh, utility partners who are interested in something more than power. We have, um, uh, brokers and developers and who are interested in the development of the area.
Do they just give the money and don't, don't have any expectations of what you're going to do?
Well, they have, they have an expectation that we'll communicate with them, that I'll be available and that we're doing what we're saying we're, what we're saying we're doing. It may be, uh, a developer that's looking at this area and they want to, you know, they've been members for so long and they want to participate in how they found that piece of ground, that building, and they want us to be aware of it and, and.
I'm always curious too, why, why can't we know about these prospects that come to you? I mean, they, I, there's no, I mean, if there, if there's nothing signed that says that you don't represent them and they certainly don't.
Well, there are, there are cases and it's certainly not the, the normal for our nondisclosure that we have signed, uh, that I have signed. The, a prospect that comes in on a project, uh, they would prefer to remain anonymous and, and partly this, just to stop getting contacted by everybody in the world.
Yeah, I made a note, I don't understand why, um, why you don't get them on reports because it has kind of a brief description of what, what the interest is. I mean, it doesn't say anything about the company, but it does say, you know, what they're looking for, where there's, and so I know, and I used to give it all the time when I was on the council, so I don't, I, you know, it's not like it's.
It's an oversight of our partnership.
It's not a, it's not a, a fourth day. And I don't know if it was something that was redistributed from the city. I have no idea, but, but yeah, I think absolutely we should, we should share that because it's not, I mean, that's something that's available.
So how much money does Edgerton and the air center give? Do they give twenty-five thousand each?
Edgerton gives twenty-five, the air center, uh, fifty-two plus about forty-five thousand in marketing, plus, uh, they have my office space and they pay other incidental out the office.
So almost a hundred thousand just in.
I'd like to just touch real briefly because we've got the agreement here in front of us and, uh.
Not taking action, so we'll have to circle back on it.
Well, if, I, I just have a question.
Oh, okay, I thought you were, I thought you were, yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware, since not an action, I just, okay.
All right, nothing like that. Uh, section one sees about business recruitment. And it talks about the EDC showing you take specific efforts, identify, uh, target businesses by industry and by name to inform businesses of the opportunities for the city, et cetera. You know, Christie was mentioning earlier that, that, you know, we don't want to, seems desperate, you know, if somebody with a hazardous waste transfer facility wants to open something up on Center Street or something, I mean, this is obviously not somebody that we're going to be all that excited about. But, uh, and, and this is something that I've been talking about for a while. I, I know that we, we're sitting in a very unique position as far as transportation, distribution, things of that nature. However, uh,